All right, does everybody have an agenda?
Yes.
We'll just wait a second here until we have some more people coming in. So you all set?
Fine.
Okay. So I opened the meeting of the May 15th of the Rowland Planning Board. First of all, before we do some project updates and get into regular business, I just wanted to welcome Steve Cassioto as a new member who was voted in on the election on Tuesday, and took it upon himself to get sworn in quickly. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
And as we know, Chris Dorn is an associate member, so we definitely have some more input. And we're not running with a four-member board, so I really appreciate the fact that both of you are...
We don't have to come in sick anymore.
We've been pretty good about showing up.
We were.
If you look at the agenda, there's project updates, which there's just a few items. You look at Katrina's staff report. We have an election of officers. We have to...
When is the time to do that?
Right now?
Well, beginning of the meeting.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm not used to...
Yeah, that's what we have, the last of the votes.
Does it have to be on the agenda? It might.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do it.
Okay, so next meeting, election.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that. I want to put it down there. It's not really project update, I put it time at the end.
Right.
After the mint. We can see. All right, the first one is Downriver Ice Cream received an occupancy permit on April 25th. And Katrina and Larry collaborated to help make that happen. The building inspector was satisfied that some documents were sent in. If there's a couple of items that need to be done, those are on the building's constructor's side of things, not site plan issues. Is that correct, Larry? Do you have any questions to say on that?
Yes.
Okay. This is a memo to Ken Ward from Katrina dated April 25th, and also a memo dated April 25th from HR Brand Associates. So you can read those. The next thing, there was a lengthy homeowners' association document with covenants and basically the homeowners' association rules that they're going to follow for all the residences that were part of it. Jill Mann wrote acknowledging the fact that we have to approve those. I wanted to ask the board, it's a lengthy...
It's under B.
It's under B. An email from Jill Mann dated April 29th. One of the decision conditions requires the planning board approve the association documents. See item four on page eight of the SPA decision. Here's a draft, so we have a draft. It's like 58 pages. The only conditions that the board imposed relative to the documents is a no on-street parking, as we recall, we had discussions about that, which is identifying the rules and regs of declaration on page 27, and the creation of easements, which is shown on site plans and referenced, and the owner has the right to grant easements under section D2 on page seven of the master deed. Please note that the master deed lists the continued observance of the conditions of the approvals as an ongoing requirement of the condo association. See the schedule one to the master deed on page 20. And Jill Wright signed, still waiting to hear back from Irene Del Bono about the conservation restriction. As you know, she's at the state, but intend on emailing her tomorrow. Obviously, the CR is a prerequisite for two-grant building, as a phase fashion network is in a special permit. Now, the question, it's a lengthy document that we need to approve, and it's a legal document. Does anybody want to make the recommendation, you know, read it and make a recommendation at our next meeting, which will potentially be in about two weeks, two or three weeks? Or is it something that you think we should have Judy... I'd like to take a vote whether we should Judy Pickett review it?
I don't think so.
Do you want to review it? Do you have experience in that?
Oh, I can look at it, yeah. You know, I have some experience as well.
Oh, that's a great...
But that being said, because I'm in butter, I'm not sure if people know in butter I...
All right, you're refused.
Yeah.
I said it to you, but it's quite difficult.
Take a vote, or just take it under advisement that you'll...
Yeah, I can...
You'll make comment at the next meeting.
Right.
Because these documents are lengthy, I think they need to be, obviously, I just read some of the relevant, you know, conditions that come from us, but I think we're in a position where we need to approve the entire document.
Right.
I think it is, so...
Mr. Chairman, as far as time...
You have any other comments, then?
As far as time, I just wanted to see, I don't know if you remember when that needs to be approved, before what?
First occupancy permit.
Oh, is it just occupancy permit?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so there's no question.
I'll check it out.
Well, Jill had mentioned in a memorandum that there was any timeline. Did she say anything to you?
No.
Did she mention anything to you?
No, I was just wondering how long we have to, you know, before they're going to be saying we're going to approve this.
Yeah, she didn't make a request.
But I think there's a lot of time.
She didn't make a request in the email?
Right.
All right, is that okay? That we just put it on the agenda for next meeting, and we'll get input. You want to click any...
Sure. Yep, fine.
Lastly, under project updates, there's a lastly, oh, just for the potential... Katrina and I met with the selectmen on Monday night, the Cedarwood Lane residents gave a historical, I guess, summary of their frustration with the process of getting the appropriate screening, either via fence and some of the other conditions like periodic picking up of litter, implementation of the landscape plan with the white pines planted properly, and having, and also thriving so that they actually will grow and provide the screening that is the intention of planting them in the first place. But as far as the fence goes, we're awaiting, well, you might want to come, and you talked to the building inspector today, and so did I. Since the fence is nine feet high, it has to be approved by the building inspector. So there has to be either a plan from the fence company, or a landscape architect, or potentially engineer, but until the building inspector receives that, obviously, that fence cannot be, the intention is for them to put it in in June, but the building inspector as of today has not heard from DeMullis or John Matthews as far as when a plan and a request for a building permit would come.
If I remember right, we had recommendations on that fence because they wanted to make it out of pine, and I suggested that they make it out of cedar.
It is cedar, yeah.
And they do need a plan for that fence.
But it has to be, anyways, the building inspector doesn't have one yet, so we need, they need to submit it. Katrina has, we have dialogue open, and we hope as we see it, then, you know, we'll send it to the board members if there's any comments on it. Okay? And then also Ken Ward can give us feedback as well. Because, you know, the criteria have to be, the thing has to be square, it has to be permanent, it has to be functional, and it has to be aesthetically pleasing for the neighbors, and it can't be something that's going to blow down or be warped or not last.
And this was a letter he sent today, if you wanted to read any. It does say they'll begin fence installation in early June, landscaping will immediately follow.
So that's my question, is what's the response been from market basket?
Did we get a, that's the response, just the letters stating what we put in. Did we get a letter from the selectmen?
No, we didn't.
The selectmen were going to give their opinion of basically what they heard and give the planning board some recommendations that we can take into account going forward. You know, basically, just going back to an old special permit from '86 and '89, and the conditions that go with it, whether or not those conditions are something that we need to bear more pressure on DeMullis to comply with those ongoing conditions. As you know, DeMullis wants to, well, their real estate company is considering maybe a new project, you know, upcoming, but obviously, that project will have to be reviewed by this board on its own merits, but, you know, we want to make sure their history is, has a good neighbor, leave it that way.
That's where I was leading to, is it's been taking, it's been an awful long time getting to do them, do the things that they said they were going to do.
No, and I'm sympathetic and empathetic with someone who has to live right behind them, and the original conditions were there to try to mitigate and lessen the impact on the neighborhood, and they need to comply with those, you know, so. Any other comments on that?
I agree with Gaten.
Okay.
Me too.
We have new business, not new business, sorry, we have a couple of A&R subdivision approval that requires. The first one is Two Bennett Hill Road and 257 Weatherfield Street, Richard and Robert Hemmerdinger, Robert Scally, LLC Lot Line Adjustment. Can you vote in there? I'm going to read, having a planner is great because it gives us some, I don't want to use the word talking points, I'm sorry. I won't use that. Some information that's relevant to the agenda item, and then we'll let the applicant do their presentation. If you don't, the applicant submitted an A&R for the board's consideration, the plan shows two small technical deficiencies. Number one, the scale is one inch to 30 feet, and a 40-foot scale is required by the planning board. Number two, the names of the abutters across the street are not shown. The revised frontage also shows an encumbrance across the necessary frontage. And I want to have you elaborate on the encumbrance. But the board will have to decide if the frontage meets the zoning bylaw definition. If the board decides the plan does not show a subdivision, it may vote to endorse the plan as one not requiring approval under subdivision control law. An encumbrance is what, utility?
Right, well, the Raleigh zoning bylaw defines frontage as, the continuous distance unencumbered by easements or otherwise measured between the side lot lines of the street line on a way that qualifies for frontage under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81L, not including common driveways. And so what happens here is both lots existed, both homes existed. Do you want the applicant to describe this rather than me, or...
I just asked what the encumbrance is.
Okay.
That's all.
There happened to be a water line going across the corner. I think it's a water line. So they reconfigured the lot lines, and I think some pets may be buried there, and so they reconfigured the lot lines to include that over here, they flared it here, and they just need an easement right across there, but they need, I think, every foot of that frontage, and so if you, if you take away the, I don't know how, how wide the encumbrance is, they don't have adequate frontage there.
No, but if you have an easement, it doesn't affect the frontage.
Well, that's a question. All right, so now, should we listen now?
Well, I mean, the bylaw says, refers to frontage as being unencumbered by easements or otherwise. That provision's been in the books for a long, long time, and I don't think any of us know what it really means.
And actually, there'd be a lot of lots in Raleigh, like on my street, Wilson Pond Lane there, every lot is covered by an easement, you know, because the easements run right along the sidewalk, so we all have no frontage.
Did you say that our rules and rights have a different definition?
Right, yeah, it's right here, and it's similar, but it's worded differently, and I don't know if you know the history of the definition.
No, these are both before my time.
It says, "The linear extent of a lot measured along the street right-of-way from the intersection of said right-of-way with one side lot line to the intersection with the other side lot line, but not including any portion thereof devoted to a right-of-way or driveway serving more than one lot or dwelling unit," which, which goes against what this says about common driveways not being included. And so that, on this one, it can't be encumbered by a right-of-way easement.
Right.
But in the bylaw, it just says easements period, or otherwise.
Yeah, right-of-way is different.
It says encumbrance or unencumbered, right?
Unencumbered by easements or otherwise.
I mean, are these buried utilities?
Yeah, water lines are buried.
So it's, right, so, I mean, I'm sure it's open to interpretation, but it would seem like the town's definition of right-of-way would be more applicable because we're...
Yeah, well, I think it's probably what more, what was intended, rather than just a water line.
Maybe fix the problem to the future.
Yeah, we probably could.
Yeah, that's one of the, keep that in mind, Larry, while we have that discussion.
I don't, as far as I know, I don't think the intent of the bylaw was not to allow something like this.
Right.
I'd be really surprised if it was.
Larry, you have any comments based on the history?
I agree with a wider part of the discussion. I don't, I don't think the intent was to...
I mean, there's easements, I mean, Katrina brought up Wilson Pond Lane. There's easements to maintain, you know, multiple detention basins, there's underground, underground electrical conduits, there's all kinds of things that would encumber every lot.
Right, so I think it's been ignored in some cases, and so you don't want to just pick on one, and I don't know...
Well, I'm comfortable with approving it. It's otherwise approvable, right?
Except for those small little deficiencies. I don't know if you normally waive those, if it's just a small deficiency.
Thirty is scaled better than forty is scaled, actually.
Well, I'm just going by the rules.
Larry, they typically, do you ask for a plan with those provisions?
I would recommend you waive that, but thirty's an odd scale. They usually go twenty, forty, but thirty's an odd scale, but I think it's fine.
Is there, I would like the applicant to give a general, are the applicants representatives, please?
I'm here.
Kind of explain what you're doing, why you're doing it, if you just, any more information other than what you've already heard in the discussion?
Yeah, my name's Robert Scally. I purchased 257 Weatherfield Street, and upon staking out the property for, you know, development, we discovered the water line was already on the property, and I don't think anybody knew it existed. We really didn't know what to do with it. Part of the guy's driveway was on the property, there's a cemetery pet area on the property, this underground wiring on the property for animals, and the only solution really to deal with this was to create an easement, and he offered to, you know, buy a section of the property and make this lot a little bit bigger. So that's kind of how this all got generated.
So the majority is being purchased except for this little thing?
Yeah, it's about 4,000 square feet, it's on the side of the yard that, you know, really serves no purpose, it's on a downhill grade, it's probably never going to be mowed, landscaped, or anything like that. It's just this water line became a major issue at the time with the water department. You know, nobody knew it existed. To get a water line onto this gentleman's property, he needed to cross Bennett Hill Road all the way to the other side, so the easiest solution was to, you know, create an easement for it. I mean, I don't know what the cost, I did get an estimate on cost of crossing Bennett Hill Road to, you know, the existing water main, because his frontage doesn't have a main on his side, and I think this is what happened when the developer put his property in, he just targeted the easiest location.
Of course.
And that happened to be Weatherfield Street. The prop, the water line is on the other side of Bennett Hill Road, so for him to establish a water line on his property, he would have to cross the intersection of Bennett Hill Road and Weatherfield Street to the other side on right street through his property, so.
It'd be very expensive.
Yeah, we're looking at $30,000, and I just said, do this.
Any board members have any comments? You want to motion? Do we approve the form?
I'll second.
Second, I choose. All of us here, tie?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Now, the second subdivision that's not required...
Oh, wait, do we want to sign it?
Yes.
So we can leave with it?
Yeah.
It's right here, some kind of... I mean, you can actually handle that amount.
Go to the motion, right?
Of course, we appreciate your comments on everything.
You comment on it, comment on everything, right?
That's the key.
What can he vote on, again?
He's, the associate member is limited to special permits.
Because, as you know, that's, that's a key issue when... Katrina, just that one?
No, but now we have the, oh, yeah, it's just this one.
What's yours doing?
Do you want it? Do you usually sign the paper ones, too? Because I can always get a copy of the registry when this is recorded, so I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Thank you very much. My name's Hemmerdinger, I bought the land.
How are you?
Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming. Have a good night.
Ah, that's interesting. That was my school name, I would say.
I don't know, which should we send with the... I'm going to read again.
No, actually, that's the one you have.
Okay. We have them presented to...
Yeah, I don't want to read them, I want the background to the memory. I think it's useful to kind of get contact.
No, it's very helpful.
And also, all right, this A&R is 115 Kittery Ave, Mitchell Harley, Susan Bailey, and the Mass Department Fish and Game, Reduced Frontage Lot. I've talked to Katrina and talked to Ken Ward, but I'm going to read the, instead of giving any opinion or any feedback, that will come when we have a discussion after the presentation by the applicant. An application for A&R at 115 Kittery Ave has been submitted for tonight's meeting. An older plan showing the frontage on the southern side of 115 Kittery Ave, and other submitted information will be found as attachment D in your package. The owner would like to split off a reduced frontage lot under section 6.1.1.2 of the zoning bylaw. The reduced frontage lot would gain its frontage from the gravel portion of Kittery Avenue that extends beyond Fennel Drive. The board needs to decide if this part of Kittery Avenue meets one or more of the three definitions of roads in section 81L of Mass General Laws, C41A, a public way or a way which the clerk of the city of town certifies maintains and uses public way, or a way shown on a plan there to, for, approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law, or C, a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the city or town in which the land lies, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction provided for needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land, and the buildings erected or to be erected thereon. The plan also must meet all the requirements of the board's rules and regs. If the board decides that the road does provide adequate frontage for the reduced frontage lot, then obviously the vote would be to endorse the plan. We have information that the applicant submitted a copy of the 1911 plan, indeed describing the layout of Kittery Ave. The town does not maintain the gravel portion of Kittery Avenue today for as long as the new highway severity can recall. The town does not maintain a list of town accepted streets, therefore, it's up to the applicant to prove the street is a public way. And that's with various types of circumstantial as well as evidence that it was accepted at one point by the selectmen in a town meeting, as is typical in a way that we accept public The abutting lot, number 28-83-A, appears to be, to totally encompass the layout of the gravel portion of Kittery Ave, which would raise the question of whether anyone has the right to use it. Is that lot owned by Conley?
It's in a trust.
It's in a trust, okay.
I believe it is Conley's.
Okay, that doesn't matter, but it's in a trust, okay. So this portion of the road was never approved under the subdivision control bylaw. Katrina, do you think it's appropriate to, you've done some thinking on this, do you want to read your...
Well, I would, I would probably... Well, I would, um, I would probably let the applicant-
Your analysis will wait, yeah, Katrina?
Um, present it first.
Did everybody get that email? The email's written to me.
They may submit information that we don't have.
All right, yeah, Katrina also has an addendum to the staff report, which I just read, but I think it's important to just hear the presentations. You can see the criteria, it's difficult. And there's some issues here in terms of whether it's a public way. And there is also another lengthy series of case law and kind of criteria that a planning board could use that Katrina found today, which should be in your packet. It's also quite lengthy, but, uh-
Oh, this?
Yeah.
Not everyone got this, it was two.
Not everybody, but that's, what's it called again?
It's, uh, Massachusetts Streets in Ways for Surveyors. And it was done in 2011, so it's fairly recent.
Yeah, and we have some sections from that, but after the presentation that before we vote, we might bring up, so, all right, good. Just introduce who you are.
My name is Mitchell Harley.
So Bailey?
My wife and I, Sue Bailey, uh, own 115 Kittery Avenue, but we presently own approximately twelve and a half acres, plus or minus. Uh, we've owned the property for almost exactly 25 years. First of all, with regard to the, um, the act of the county commissioners in 1911, that petition was brought on behalf of the inhabitants of the town of Rowley and Mrs. Fennel. So the, the inhabitants of Rowley petitioned the county commissioners, who at that time had the authority to decide. The plan that extends Kittery Avenue was submitted, you know, and approved as part of that county, act of the county commissioners. So that's, that's, that's our primatization basis.
This one you have, I think it's labeled D, I'm not sure.
It's part D from Katrina. Um, and it's from a 1911 document and-
Fourth page or something.
And it's obviously, since it's 1911, it's handwritten, beautiful handwriting.
But there's a drawing of the extension.
Are you talking about the displaning?
Yes.
Yeah, it extends well beyond our property line.
So this is, this is Fennel Drive here, isn't it?
No, it was Rowley took an official act to petition the county commissioners. The county commissioners approved it. That's, I'm just raising one point here.
But it wasn't approved by town meeting, right?
This is a long time ago.
There are a lot of roads in Rowley that have been approved by town meeting.
When was this, 1911?
1911.
Can I ask the board if they have the document that describes the layout?
Yeah.
Can they look at the bottom of page 405, almost the very end of the document?
Can you?
I'm Phil Pattison with Meridian Associates. We prepared the-
Yeah, you need to, um, yeah, I'm sorry, just for Katrina for the minutes?
Phil Pattison with Meridian Associates. The very end of the document, page 405.
No, all men by these?
Um, five lines up, sir. Same as recorded that said road may be known as a public highway forever.
Lines, five lines up from no by all men?
Yes, sir. The very end of the document.
Is order that the county commissioners, here on two, set.
Oh, I see it.
Now you see it?
Where?
Hi.
It's right, right, right above the note reading there.
Once you read through it, once you get the-
Oh, yeah, 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 right, right. It's kind of condensed. Moody Kimball, James For, J. M. Rosbender, Jr., county commissioners, that the said road may be known as a public highway forever. Forever's a long time.
Katrina, in your research, did you come across the issue of whether the county commissioners can-
Right, well, I sent you that email earlier today, and I was researching Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 84, sections 1 through 23. And it looks like what this is, is, and I outlined it, I think Chairman Bryant has the piece of paper that I can't seem to find right now.
What, this one?
It's all, no, it's all state law excerpts from Massachusetts General Laws. It's like dark.
What, the thicken?
No. Well, I can remember. I don't remember exactly which section, but there was a petition. I believe this is what the petition is. But then the, but then the acts have to be recorded, certified by the town clerk, and sent to the registry of deeds. And then the, once the town clerk files it within seven days, town meeting has to vote and accept the way.
Oh.
And so this is a part of it. And so I think possibly you could find the other part in town hall or somewhere, but this is just the petition. Do you know when that rule started, that the clerk had to see it as well? I believe these are the, the acts of 1836. And so the way could have been laid out before then, but it looks like it was finally petitioned. It was a private way. They petitioned it in 1911, but that's just one step in having the road accepted. And it's right in my office.
Well, we have a legal, um, you know, for example, Andrea Dawson, this is written by an attorney, it's called A and Rs in Ancient Ways. Have you seen that?
I haven't seen any of this particular-
One of the claims that may be made as to these A and R apps is that the road is an ancient way. This claim is hugely presented in capital letters, as though that was a term of art, meaning old public way, way in time block, so. This booklet is intended to assure planning boards and the public that the term, in fact, has no precise meaning and no legal bearing on whether or not a road is public way or whether it qualifies for A and R approval. So-
When I read this myself, I didn't see, I don't think I saw anything about the approval of county commissioners making a road public.
Before in 1846, a road could be made public by a proper layout, a vote of the city, town, or county. This is before 1846. Dedication created by an individual group without public cause, acceptance, that would be a public acceptance of the group.
This is-
Creation of a statutory private way, a way again by an individual group, and then, and this was chapter two or three of the acts of eight- The loose system created burdens of maintenance on communities for roads that are never intended to make public. Chapter two or three of the acts, because basically all of these different ways that they became public were just groups, as such that they're public, created maintenance nightmares for towns that were being formed or variety formed. So the chapter two or three of the acts of 1846 changed the whole system, requiring detailed layouts and votes to create a public way.
Vote so, who?
This law in modern form is reflected in general law, chapter 84, section 23. Under this law, followed by the courts in the last century, dedication was not sufficient, and new statutory private ways could not be created. Descriptive use, however, continued to be the least possible way for the road to become public, at least a possible way. Hence the importance to people intended using the A and R process, approving the public nature of roads with no layout history. In this town, I mean, one of the, I don't, I mean, at town meeting, when, how long has Rowley been doing town meeting?
Before 1911.
Do you think this would have been recognized? Did you find, did you do any research in that regard?
Excuse me, I thought it-
Yeah.
Sue searched from 1919, two years before the petition, up through, what was it?
19.
1919, and founds no official acts one way or another in the town records.
So it's just the county commissioners?
Correct.
A lot of maintenance every year. It showed up on the list of roads every year that they were retaining.
And I would-
How's it maintained? For what use?
That just the highway surveyor listed all the roads that even weren't, you know, and how many yards of gravel we put on and something, I'm not sure.
On a yearly basis or just over time?
Every year.
Does that apply, what, why?
They like to put a lot in the town report then.
Yeah, but why do they maintain it?
All of Kittery.
No, that, the gravel portion.
I'm saying that they listed all the roads in town they worked on.
Okay.
It was just on the list. She isn't saying that they actually maintained.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was going to add that, um, we've lived there for 25 years. During many, if not most, of those years, the gravel portion of Kittery Avenue was used by the Pine Grove School Bus as a turnaround. And accordingly, it needed to be plowed, so the school bus could turn around.
Right, too.
So that was a public use and it was plowed by the town.
This, um, if I may, there's, um, there's ways that they suggest that one could try and prove that, that a way is public or that it's been a public way laid out in the manages by Massachusetts General Laws, um, chapter 84. They do say that trying to prove a way is public under that, that first definition requires a great deal of circumstantial evidence, where direct evidence only establishes that the way in question was laid out as a highway, which is, which is what this does. And the reason for that is, is because, you know, in the future, if it's proved a public way, of course, any number of A and R plans can be approved off it, and also we would have to maintain it, would be responsible for snow removal, and so- Is that your old road sometimes? Pardon? There's a lot of roads in town that are not accepted that we do or don't maintain or send the school bus down and whatnot. West Ox pasture, is that? That's a public way. It is.
Yep.
But it's not paved or- Right.
Doesn't have to be paved, but has to be accepted by town meeting.
Has that been accepted?
Actually, all the west ox pasture hasn't been accepted, right?
No, I don't think it has.
So, not all the way through, but to the ban and stuff?
But they did put the utilities down.
And their new houses?
Yeah, the water, the water lines are down, which I read about, you know, there are utilities. That's circumstantial evidence that it's maintained by the town.
Does use by the school bus and plowing for that sake constitute public use and maintenance?
I think it's part of it. I would think so.
Well, this is the list that they suggest as, you know, the proof that it is a public way. First, it should be proven that the way was laid out by the selectmen and accepted by a vote at town meeting. You can also provide evidence of use, construction, or repair, from which a court could infer whether the road was laid out as a town or a private way. Identifying owners of the land traversed, by the way, over its course during the time period in which the way was laid out, and any important location likely to have been frequented by the public to which the way in question provides access. Now, possibly you could use us turning around in it, but I think what they're looking for is there's some destination that the public at large would be using it, or is it just one house that one person would be using?
What is down that gravel road?
Well, it leads, it leads to, dead ahead, it leads to a field owned by the Conleys. Off to the right of it is what we call Tote Road leading back to the marsh. As you probably know, the, the Fennel estate comprised that entire neighborhood, and these were originally laid out as farm roads for the estate. And, um, the, the Marsh Road is, is shown as one of those roads, but, um, I mean, the, the gravel portion of Kittery is, is used by horseback riders and, you know, and people walk back there all the time. And, you know, people park there, too, as a matter of fact. You know, what, what, I, I don't know if this really bears on your decision, but, um, what we're trying to do here is we've been, the state fish and game is interested in buying this property. And, and so, you know, we, we're talking about a bargain sale for land that would be permanently preserved and not developed.
And you show, again, I don't know if that's- Mitch, can you show us? This part, which, just want to show what exactly the state is going to buy. And this is going to provide access back to the state fish and game land?
Yeah, they, they own land behind this, okay, currently. So this whole thing is our twelve and a half acres. Here's where the paved portion of Kittery Avenue ends, and here's where the 1911 plan shows it continuing. This is, on this plan, it's called the Woods Road. The Marsh Road is the, is the older term for it. So this 50-foot, 55-foot bit of frontage along this side of our property, broadening out to this, land in back, comprising approximately eight acres contiguous to land currently under the state fish and game, is what we're talking about dividing off and selling.
So how, will you keep this?
How are they access their property, through that frontage or through the Marsh Road?
I think through this frontage.
Would they, they put a driveway down there?
Can I ask you, why, why did, I noticed there was an earlier plan where, I mean, and it seems like it would avoid this problem if you put it over here, which is not, that's the April 30th plan, the May 9th plan, this is the one we're looking at. Puts it up here in this area of Kittery that's-
Well, because, but look at the, uh, the-
Well, I mean, they drew a plan to that effect, so.
Yeah, but see where the house is and where they have, I mean, you, you guys have farmed part of it, right?
We, yeah, we farmed it, we have an orchard there. We have a, um, portion of our septic plant, a system goes, goes across the border. And this whole side of the property is, if, if you wanted to walk from Kittery Avenue back to the Marsh, you would never do it on this side. It's, you know, it's wet, there's a lot of little brooks to cross. Everybody knows this.
I remember, I've been out there a while.
It's just, you know, it's, 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 it's-
Comes off the hill.
When you see it, it's obvious, you know, you would never put it on this.
I drove out there today, and the interest, I was surprised to see the two different variations on the plan, though, for that reason, because I saw the earlier one, and I was thinking that this is, let me, um, just, I haven't done the research. When, I understand that the county, when the county dissolved, it reverts to, do we know who it reverts back to, the, the landowner that originally granted the rights?
No, it, what, this is how I understand. This is just quick research I've done in the last couple of days. Back in 18, or 19th century, when homeowners had, you know, they accessed their, their lots through a road that had been there for years and years, or possibly a new house was built and their road became used by others, they would petition the county to accept the layout, and they would submit a layout, describe meets and bounds. Is this your understanding, too?
Our, our house was built in 1909, by the way, which was two years before this road was extended. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
And then, so there was, there was some of that activity going on at the time.
There were houses up the gravel road. So there's a process layout?
Yeah, yeah, well, there's, at the end of the, extension of Kittery Ave., there was a house that burned down.
People offered. They said, we want the county to take over this and start maintaining it. We don't want to maintain it anymore. And it kind of became a public way. In some towns, looking through the case law, they were called private ways. But the process was always outlined in state law, and so, and it, and it always involved a town meeting vote in a town. And so I think that may be the key. It's also been suggested to me that we possibly ask town council's advice on what kind of proof we should be looking for, because once you endorse frontage on a way, you're not stuck with doing it all the time, but it could open the door for other potential lots to be created.
Well, we could also, we haven't talked about, was it paragraph C of that law, which talks about a way in existence in 1951? It seems to me this was a way in existence in 1951, so we could prove format if we find that the, as you pointed out in your email, if the access is adequate for the proposed use.
Right, and that's, um, under the third definition, general law 41, uh, section 81 L.
Now, where is these?
Yeah, just, a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the city or towns in which the land lies. Having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to proposed use, and I think, and for the installation, and, and that, it probably, it does.
Well, I don't know, I mean, we, I don't think any one of us have been out there to look at the road.
I mean, the use of the proposed-
You'd also have to limit the future use of that lot, too, or limit it to a certain use.
What's on the ground seems, just looking from the aerial view, seems very minimal. It's, I don't know, a cart road to me.
I mean, the use is totally, I mean-
But if the use is a conservation use, then that seems to me that makes-
Possibly with a parking lot for public use, too. So that, that's why I, I don't know if you'd have them add a note to the plan if you do decide to endorse it under the third definition, because, um, once it's endorsed, in the future, say 30 years down the road, someone else comes in and saying, but they endorsed this one, it would be nice to see right on the plan why it was endorsed.
The other thing is, we could approve the plan thinking that the use is going to be, you know, it's conservation land.
And not a building lot.
And the deal could fall through for whatever reason, and 30 years from now, you know.
Right, so you could put a non-buildable- Right, so you could put a not buildable lot in?
There could be a house on there, which is something that we'd, you know.
And that's something that you might want to run by the applicants also, because I think this is being done for appraisal purposes too. And it may defeat the purpose if that lot is labeled not buildable.
Is that true?
Yeah, it would kill the deal. Another thing that would kill the deal is the state's fiscal year, as you probably knew, ends on June 30th and they have budget for it this year. So if we take, beyond June 30th, we can't close, then, you know, there's no guarantee that the state would have budget in the next fiscal year.
So for the non-buildable lot or the same, that would kill the deal because it just wouldn't be worthwhile for you to sell it, you're saying?
That would affect the appraisal and we would not qualify for the conservation, the refundable tax credit from the state, which is the greater portion of the proceeds that we would realize from this bargain sale to the state. It has to be considered a buildable lot for the appraisal purposes or else the state's offer is so far below what we would accept without that tax credit.
Oh, they get a tax break for the difference?
Pardon me?
You get a tax break for a portion of it?
It's a $50,000 refundable tax credit.
Max, if it's half of the difference that you leave on the table, I believe.
So that's how, okay.
Right. So if it's not, if you guys stipulate that it's not a buildable lot, then there's no deal.
We're just looking for ways to, you know, not set the precedent to over. Go ahead. Can you state your name, please?
Sure, Ann Gagnon of Mass Fish and Wildlife.
Hi.
You had asked a question earlier about what happens to lands that was considered a county road. And Section 6D of Mass General Law, Chapter 34B, which I provided a copy to you, says that all rights, title, and interest in real property that were held by counties for county road purposes on the date that the county was abolished in this chapter called County Roads are hereby transferred from the Commonwealth as provided in this subsection. And then it goes on to add, for any abolished county that has no successor, council of governments' title is hereby transferred to the respective towns in which the interests lie. So under that, it would indicate to me that the 1911 county layout, that road, you know, the handwritten book and page that you were referencing earlier, and the county road layout, that plan that shows that extend, you know, the extension of Kittery Road, that would indicate to me that it was taken by the county and when the county abolished, it then reverted to the town of Rowley. I'd also like to point out that Kittery Road, the majority of Kittery Road, Rowley gets reimbursed by the state.
I don't think that matters.
And, well, I just point that out.
That issue, that argument's been made in the past and I believe town council has told us it's really not a relevant factor. It's just something the town has been claiming.
Maybe that point doesn't really matter. But I added as additional circumstantial evidence that if the town was considering, you know, all the houses that exist on the paved portion of Kittery as being on a public way, and I think we can all agree to that because that portion of the Kittery Road is, you know, plowed on a regular basis and paved for that matter.
We don't know it's plowed on-
Excuse me?
Do we know it's definitely, do we know it's plowed on a regular?
There's, I don't know, 25 houses on it?
And it's paved.
Oh, that part, oh, that part.
Yeah, the gravel part was allowed for the school bus.
But I point out that the layout doesn't make an exception, didn't extend just that gravel portion, it regarded the whole section of Kittery Road, paved and unpaved portion. I'm sure back in 1911, it was all unpaved.
What's the-
Right, well, before the subdivision control law, so.
Right. So I just point out that it's not that much of a stretch to consider the whole layout of a public way that the county had taken back in 1911 and then turned over to the town of Rowley. And in terms of how much of a precedent this, you know, will this affect the town in terms of, you know?
Opening up all the-
Exactly. I just point out that the layout, that you have a copy of that plan, only shows it extending just a little bit beyond the end of Sue and-
Can you show that? Can you help me out on that argument?
She's referring to this, the road, and this is, disagrees with the 1911 plan. Here's, here's Kittery Avenue, here's Fennel Drive, and this is the extension of Kittery Avenue.
It's a larger copy.
Oh, okay, thank you.
This is Fennel now?
Yeah. This is the extension.
That's, which is, frontages along here.
Here's our property limit and the extension goes past that. And it's done on this drawing, this little room.
The one thing I will point out too is that it seems to me, this is a building. That looks like a building to me, which at the time, I'm suspecting was Addison Davis' residence or barn.
This one that burned down.
Yeah, there's a house that burned down.
It seemed as though the purpose here was to provide access, perhaps?
I know, I know where that is now.
Could be the Searle house too. Yes, it's like an 1884 map. You can see it ending right at the Searle house.
Fish and game, what are their intentions?
Just to keep it as open space.
Why is it imperative that it's a buildable?
Because of the appraised value, we can't pay more than appraised value. And if it's considered a buildable land, then we can't give them hardly any money for it. You understand?
In which case we really have no incentive to sell it.
Right.
The other thing is that 1911 layout, I just wanted to point out, did not extend Kittery Road, it just shifted Kittery Road. So Kittery Road was already in existence, they were just changing the exact layout.
We also have the assessor's maps that show the road going all the way up.
Yeah, it was on the current assessor's map. Oh, it is? Yeah.
But the assessor's maps, he can show us.
To back that up, the dash line that's shown, this is your dash line in here, that was the existing path of road at the time and you can see that it extended all the way to this point. And the layout terminus was here and here. What they did was they created some nice geometry surrounding the roadway that was there, because that was what the county would do. They would put geometry on a roadway based on the existing conditions, could be stone walls, could be the roadway itself.
And so you went back to Cross Street and measured all the way?
Yeah, we went all the way.
All the way.
It was, a sidelight to all of this is that if you read the document that decreed the roadway, your butters were to monument the layout. The county laid out the bound points on behalf of the residents along Kittery, but they never monumented it. They never put, actually put stone walls in. So part of our retracement was to acquire the field notes that went with the original survey and use some of the objects located in the original survey to help us put Kittery on the ground.
Are all those objects still exist?
Well, we were fortunate enough that some of the structures down at the corner of Cross Street were, you know, some of the old homesteads.
Schwartz, probably.
They were there at the time and they're still there as well. So they helped us try to take the geometry of the road and put it on the ground, so to speak, which is what surveyors do. And sometimes the primary monuments, you don't recover, I'm sure you can, and then sometimes you have to go with the secondary information, which is what ended up happening here. We would have loved to have found the bounds and we actually interviewed, I did on the phone, all the other surveyors that had worked up here and none of them had ever found the bounds, but we made a search for them anyway. And, but the funny thing about the document, if you read through it, you'll see that there's a section right at the front of the document that says that butters were to monument. And we did find the notes at the county commissioner's office, which is maintained at the South Essex Registry. And we found evidence that the bound points were set, you know, state contact, on the ground for Mrs. Fennel and the rest of the butters to monument, but we don't see any evidence that the monuments ever got set.
It even went so far as to say that the back face center of the monument had to be in-
Yeah, you saw that, yeah. So they laid it out for them, and they put it out there for them, it just never happened. And it's not different, I'm sure you've been in situations where you'll set, stay contact for a contractor to monument the roadway and then you go back as the surveyor and you certify that the monuments were put in place. Unfortunately, in this instance, the state, the county, I'm sorry, put the points in to monument it, they just never went back. But that's a whole other, that was part of our, it was a very good survey, actually, from a surveyor's standpoint.
Even though, it goes back to when? 1911?
1911.
Somebody tell me the difference between one portion of Kittery Avenue and the 1911 layout, it seems to be-
All the same.
The same thing, some of it's paved and some of it's brown.
It is the same. That's what he was just talking about.
What's the same in the 1911 plan, it's the same in his plan, it's the same in the assessor's? This is up to the gravel roads, accepted on maybe?
Well, we don't know.
Oh, okay.
Right?
It was a list of named roads.
Do we know if the road, you know, south of this point was accepted, you know, south of the gravel road?
I think it happened before roads are accepted.
Yeah, probably, I'm just asking if we know.
I did find, I don't have it with me.
So like, Paragraph C, a way in existence when the subdivision control law became, came into effect?
That was 51?
Yeah, so I think what you're saying is the whole road existed before the subdivision control law, including this portion that we're questioning.
Well, that's what Ms. Gagnon's point is, that's your point.
And in that same, in that same document, it goes on to say that according to our best skills and judgment, we have determined that the damages occasioned by relocating said way and the benefits of derived therefrom are equal and therefore no damages are awarded, which would again further, you know, the more circumstantial evidence that there was a quote unquote taking, since no damages, they could speak to the issue of damages. Clearly, they, everyone at the time expected that section to be public. You know, that the private landowners on either side would have no further use of it.
And it appears that the Fennel estate owned all that land at the time, right?
Yes.
So, that was my concern, is that somebody who had the private rights was able to transfer those rights to the county. And it seems as though when the county dissolved, those rights became the rights of the town. And as a result of it, it seemed like that's consistent with the Paragraph C, which is a way in existence prior to the subdivision control laws.
And that petition was brought in on behalf of the inhabitants of the town of Rowley.
Right. Well, I mean, Chris or Cliff or other members, unless you can articulate, I mean, the choices are, the only way we can ask for more evidence is to articulate what we're asking for. You know, in terms of, we have a lot of-
I have the list right here.
Yeah. And in order to do that, you know, the applicant has to withdraw it temporarily or we have to take a vote.
Bring to extension?
No. You can't, that's typically not done on the hand.
Well, the statute makes no provision for extending our deadline in these cases, so.
On the 21 days.
Yeah. Right, Chris?
I, I don't think it does.
So, and that's not a bearing, it's just, it's just one mechanism for getting more information. Or if we're satisfied with the argument, then maybe a vote we can take to endorse it.
Well, can I ask, who's, you know, I mean, where's the concern that this wasn't a way that was in existence? I mean, it was a way that was, the person that did own it granted it to the county.
I think it definitely was a way in existence in 1951. I think I said that.
But, you have to be careful with ancient ways, private way, all these things that were in existence and we saw how they became in existence, you can't translate that as an accepted road in the typical bylaw rule. And then for the town of Rowley, you know, except for, we have other criteria and also-
No, no, if it's a way in existence, that's an exception to that whole accepted-
I don't think it makes, a way in existence therefore doesn't mean it's now a public way.
That's right.
It's a different criterion.
Exactly.
But there are two findings we have to make, that it was a way in existence in 1951 and the second one is that the, it provides adequate access and whatever for the proposed use. Now, if we knew for a fact that this is going to be conservation land, I think we'd say, well, proposed use is pretty minimal, so what is a very minimal road may be adequate for the proposed use.
I actually was out there today, because I happen to be out, and there's, well, you know, the roadway does narrow from the paved section down to the gravel section, there's plenty of clearance on either side, it's the same grade, it doesn't tail off on either side.
Right.
It seems like it's adequate for the purposes of-
And fits what we talked about here.
But the interesting thing is, and in fact, I was thinking that this doesn't make a lot of sense because of the possibility that all these other A&Rs could pop up along the way, but where the layout expires or terminates 50 feet from the Fennel Drive or maybe 100 feet.
Right.
The roadway does continue down, but the layout doesn't appear to continue down, am I right?
No, the layout does continue.
Well, I thought the layout, I thought you'd show me the 1911 layout terminating, is there?
The 1911 layout is beyond our property line.
But just beyond your property line, correct?
Well, more than just beyond, it's probably, you know, at least another 50, 75 feet.
Okay. So potentially, one more abutter could ask for an A&R if we were to establish this is a public way.
Well, on to where the house burned down.
Yes, if that, yes.
Right.
I'm sorry, the Conleys.
Unless lots were combined.
Is there the danger, I mean?
But he already has frontage to build a house there if he wants to.
But does that open up all the other Conley land?
Not any more than it already is.
He could build a subdivision off the end of it.
Yeah, it would be a very nice subdivision on the side of that hill and we're hoping that never happens.
It's already cleared.
It's like acres, like I-
Beautiful.
It's already cleared.
We should walk up there sometime. It's one of the nicest spots in Rowley.
Really? I thought I was out there today.
It's already in the wood, it's other garden.
Yeah.
Used as a wood law, right?
Well, it's used as a hayfield now.
Hayfield now. Is that why it was?
This side, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just checked and I had this stamped in at the town clerk on the 14th. And so they have until June, we have until June 4th to act on it. And you were talking about having a meeting May 29th?
Well, I mean, I'll go around tonight, eventually, I wanted, that was the next thing I wanted to ask you if you can.
I don't think there's any question that the board, it seems in their deliberation tonight accepts the paved portion under seat of adequate width, sufficient width, grades in construction. So they could support it. So as Chris asked, why not go with the April 30th plan? And if access through that 50-foot strip is not practicable because of the orchard and septic and so forth, and the state can accept an easement for access, where you now propose it on the westerly side of the lot, a 20, 30-foot access?
You're right.
The problem with that is that we wouldn't pass the appraisal.
Why?
If, you're talking about selling the back acres but only allowing an easement for hunters to walk back to that spot?
No, leg would come down like the original plan, the leg would be here and there would just be an easement on that side, right?
Correct. It's the same. Six of one happened.
Well, that's giving up more of our land, more of our property, right?
That we use right in our yard.
Well, the thing is-
An easement would be there, so it wouldn't really, it wouldn't affect-
And whatever access would, this would be the easement area.
It's the same, but if it was state ownedness.
It's an easement over the leg of the porch, up to the hall.
It's really, yeah, but they don't own, it's, if they own it, then the public has the right to use it.
Yeah, we can't, we couldn't.
Because they can't own it and then we keep people off it.
Yeah, that's exactly correct. We, if it was state owned, we couldn't, we couldn't allow their exclusive-
Well, I understand that, but you opened up by saying who would walk there if they could walk, you know, on the northwesterly side.
Where the sign is.
I haven't been out there, so what I'm picturing is that nobody would walk there or drive there or make access there. They would go to where your proposal is.
Yeah, but that's not the same as saying that they can't walk back there. You know, the state owns it, the state owns it.
But the state's here, maybe we could offer up some way of preventing that from happening. I'm just trying to make a suggestion, the board can move this thing for you tonight.
Well, I appreciate that.
Well, maybe not tonight, because you don't have that plan in front of you, unless you do, the April 30th plan, but.
I would, I would strongly urge- I would, um, I would strongly urge you to consider that, that there was no distinction, it's pretty clear that there was no distinction in the 1911 layout plan as to what was being accepted and what was not being accepted, what was going to, what was being taken by the county and then turned over to the town of Rowley. You know, they didn't, they didn't say clearly, oh, but not this section, but not the end. Clearly, it was the whole section of Kittery Road that was taken by the county and then turned over to the town of Rowley.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you think we could get an opinion on this from town council? I mean, there's so many issues, um, I think...
And particularly since this would just affect this one lot, you know, again, I could, I understand completely that the planning board needs to be very careful about, you know, the precedence.
Oh, yeah, it sets, it sets a, um, a precedent all over town, as you mentioned.
Well, that's a good point.
This is very different in that we have a county layout that was turned over to the town.
It's not locked.
I said, this is different.
It's the, it was to keep the... When, when someone's talking in the audience, you need to be sure.
Thank you. Um, what I was, what I was trying to point out was that, um, in terms of precedent, this is a very unusual case in that we have, the surveyor has done the research to show that there was a taking by the county, there's a county layout, the county was abolished, which then turned it over to the town.
Well, that's why I think we should refer to town council, because, uh, for an opinion as to the significance of that, I mean, well...
And that it wouldn't be replicated in other cases, or rarely could be, yeah.
Exactly, that's my, that's my point, that, that it's going to be very rare that, that the planning board's going to come across this exact...
Same circumstances.
Circumstance where you, where you have a, a layout that was, you know, clearly...
Accepted by the county.
If there hadn't been a layout, we wouldn't have taken the job. And I'm sure Larry can testify to, wouldn't have touched it, wouldn't have touched it. And I, I know maybe that's neither here nor there, but it is relevancy, that there was a layout.
Well, I agree, it's, it's certainly relevant, there's no question about that. Um, if town council, we would have to convene, um, what's, what's the timeline here?
Oh, it could be May 29th, it's, uh, two, two weeks away.
That's the night that I have trouble getting here on time, but I'll be there.
Well, we only need three members, so...
That's good. We got a bunch of members.
Huh?
We have a lot of members.
Well, that's, I mean...
I have designated you, boy.
I could, I could, I could ask her.
And specifically, you would like to ask her for what we need for evidence and proof, because, um, right? That it's a public question?
Well, yeah, and the significance of what we've been discussing, that it was laid out and approved by the county commissioners and that upon demise of the county commissioners, it was...
60 of 34B?
The reality of that, though, is that it would, you know, it would get us past the June 30th deadline, by the time you... No, it wouldn't, you know.
So, we'll have an opinion before this?
It's signed that night, you know. Well, you would, you would, you would ask us for evidence, we'd have to have, we'd have to come up with that evidence, that would all add time.
No, we're asking for an opinion.
What you've given us, what you've given us may be sufficient, you know, the town council said, yeah, they've, they've already proved...
I'm just asking, I know that's not...
We're not going to keep moving the goal line, we're not, we're keeping that into account, I mean, I am, as chairman.
If the board allows me, I could, I could pass on any, any information I get before the meeting to the applicant.
I'm not trying to kick the can, I'm not, yeah, sure.
Excuse me, I think Ann was speaking, I, I cut her off, sorry.
No, thank you. Uh, no, the one other point that I want you to make is, the, the one sticking point, it seems to me, uh, for the planning board appears to be the fact that there wasn't a town meeting acceptance of Kittery Road. And I would just like to point out that that would be the case for all of Kittery Road. I mean, Sue did some research and we didn't find any, any acceptance of, you know, another portion of Kittery, Kittery Road either.
But, but without a doubt fits the other criteria, though.
Excuse me?
It fits the other criteria without a doubt.
Exactly, so...
Or this section, no, it really doesn't.
And, and I'm saying that this, this one little section, um, that extends over just a portion of their frontage, uh, you can see from the photos, is, is very adequate.
But it's not the intent or the use, it's not a question at all, it's the ramifications around the town of Rowley. You know, and I can name, and I'm not going to get into that tonight, because it's getting, I want to bring it to a conclusion, but, you know, you have to keep that, we have to look at that, we have, uh, documents telling us to look at that.
And, and that's why...
Okay, we have Andrea Dawson, who, as you know, Andrea's, she's been around a long time.
Alexandra, yes, yeah.
And a lot of conservation commission stuff and a lot of, I mean...
And that's why the specifics of this particular case with the county layout and the taking and the no awards of damages is telling.
It's gotta, it's gotta be a fairly unique case, and I realize that's...
I agree with that.
A contradiction in terms there, we may, but, you know, it's, I mean, there can't be a lot of these out there.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
If they just modified the way in that 1911 plan, could the way have been dedicated or petitioned, you know, 50 years prior to that or even earlier than that, um, so that we could maybe look for that at town meeting vote?
Going back 50 years prior to 1911?
Well, if it was just a modification, it looks like it was already created, the way, it was already laid out at one point.
No, it's a good point, Katrina, it might be worth doing a little bit of research within the county records to see if maybe this was a, um, a re-establishment or, uh, or an alteration, so to speak.
Yeah, our county records, they're still at the South Essex Register.
Yep, they are, might be worth, I can take a look to see if it was actually an alteration to an existing path to Ms. Davis's property, perhaps.
I, I do think what, what's going to happen, though, is, is the town council is probably going, going to ask the board to look for evidence of used construction or repair to that gravel portion, uh, because that, that's one of the, the key, um, pieces of proof that they, they say that the planning board should be looking for.
You can get it after me, because you know it.
Does it mean all those parts, or one of those parts?
How do we go to Pine Grove?
Can you have to say who you are, please?
Yeah, my name's Barry Todd.
Yes.
And, um, it's...
Where's your address, please?
Um, 5 Lafayette Street, Newburyport. And, um, I don't know if use of this road, this is very interesting to me, constitutes it being, and what we're trying, what this gentleman's trying to determine here, but I will tell you, uh, for, up until that bridge closed, I went over that, I went up that road from Central Street to my grandparents at the top of the hill for, every week for probably 40 years. So, I don't know if that has any bearing, I'm maybe sticking my nose in where it doesn't belong, but I drove it and rode it with my parents, my dad, I don't know if you knew my grandparents, uh, Peatard, had the, what's now the Soulster School, that was their home when we were kids and up through college.
All, all the way up through the field?
Yeah, we drove, we drove that road a lot of times to go visit, and my dad, when we was a little boy, we drove that way, because we lived on Hannover Street, Newbury, so sometimes we'd come Main Street, sometimes we'd come Route 1, and we'd take the shortcut up Kittery Ave, over that bridge until it was blocked off. So, if that's of any help, I'm not trying to muddy the waters here, but, but we drove that all the time, and I drove it myself as recently as, I think, 20 years ago, 15 years ago, yeah.
Is that Fennell Drive you're talking about?
Well, whatever the street is, Kittery Ave.
I don't think that's Kittery either.
No, it's Fennell with the bridge, with, with it's closed.
That's what I was saying, it's closed because of just what, for liability reasons or something.
Yeah, it's all blocked off now with stone or something, but, yeah, but we used to go over that all the time.
It's a good cut through.
Yeah, used to be.
Mitch, can I see, what's this, uh, this thing looks like a public phone, I know it's not, what, what is that on that telephone pole?
It's a skeleton from a party.
Oh, was that, I thought it was like a fire box or something, that would certainly indicate some...
Right, what was it?
The remains of a skeleton from a party.
I thought you had like an emergency pole box there or something, but...
In the case it's a public way, there are power lines, yeah, but, yeah.
I think we're not, not favoring that for town council.
As chairman, I, as chairman, I would like to, and we can get with Katrina and, and Judy will respond to it, Ms. Pickett, town council would respond to us fairly quickly because of the, the nature of ANR, there's a deadline and, um, and that communication would be, I'm in communication all the time, and Katrina will be right on, on us. You know, we'll put you on the agenda at, you know, 7:30 on the 29th.
Can I just ask for clarification, um, maybe you could list all the pieces of evidence you want me to give to Judy, um, because, uh, the, I'm sorry, and the, um, is it section 60 of...
Just kind of, yeah.
60 of 34B?
Mm-hmm.
That, that would be a key piece of evidence, then.
Yeah, I already submitted that to you, Katrina, but I'll be collecting...
Do you want to...
No, no, I'm just saying, out of all the evidence, I, I've collected a lot, too, so I'm just, I'm just trying to specify the pieces that, that you submitted now, that, um...
So she can bullet it for Judy and not ramble around?
Who would, who would we talk to, to, about the school bus? I mean, I don't know how to, I don't know how I'd ask to verify that.
Triton.
It was the Pine Grove Bus.
Triton Business Manager.
You can write the affidavit.
Your personal knowledge, yeah.
It's your personal knowledge, it's just, it's the truth.
Absolutely, we'd suggest you definitely give it to the truth.
No problem.
I mean, if you have someone, if you have, if you can, you know, get it from, through the bus routes, that's obviously, might be better and a more neutral party.
Yeah, I, I, again, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know how to do that, but I can certainly write in that David myself, and I don't know, maybe some neighbors can, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm going to mention that you're working on an affidavit about a bus turning around.
And, and, and it had to be plowed, because the bus runs in the wintertime and it snows.
Yeah, and, see, I have, I did contact the acting, um, highway surveyor, and he said that they have, they have done no maintenance on that gravel porch, portion as long as he's worked here, I'm not sure how long he's worked here, and so maybe he's forgetting that it was plowed for buses.
Well, I think, I think a lot of the times our road was plowed by contractors, you know, and, and, and in some cases, the contractors lived in the neighborhood, so...
Road can be public without being maintained as well, doesn't, just because it's not maintained doesn't mean, just because it's not paved, that they don't plow it on a regular basis, does not necessarily mean it's not public.
We're talking more of a use thing.
Right, but if you're trying to prove it's a public way, that's one way to prove that it's a public, public way, is evidence of use.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have, we have the, um, Act of the County Commissioners in 1911 and their plan, we, we have the, the school bus usage, um, you know, there's been other public usage, I don't know if, you know, horses count, but there's been lots of those, um, um, what else? The, the law that Ann brought up.
Mr. Todd said he used it until...
Yeah.
To such point that, let's see that...
Would you, you want to give us an affidavit?
See, also, a public way can, can, you can, you can also, it can go in reverse, too, but that usually takes an act of the town. It can go from public to private also.
Right, and we, we also look for that evidence.
There's no evidence that it went the other way?
No.
Yeah, from 1909 through 1918, there's no evidence one way or another, it was just Kittery Avenue was listed among the town roads.
And my experience living in this town over 30 years, I've never seen one unaccepted in here.
No.
You aren't here in 11. May I ask one more question to the applicant? If this fails, if it looks like it's about to fail or if it fails, is it your intent to resubmit the original plan and have it approved?
Well, that's a, that's a hypothetical, but the, the problem with the other plan is, um, the appraiser's take on it was that, um, it would be very problematic as a building lot, there would be, um, years of cons comm hearings over that.
And that's hard to take a price tag on.
He, he would have a very difficult time setting a price tag.
Yeah, but that's also theoretical, unless there's already, you have evidence that the appraiser can say this flagged wetlands or something.
Well, I, I...
Just because he says it, it doesn't mean it's...
Well, I, I, I understand, but we walked the property and, and, and actually John de Coles had flagged wetlands at one point when the communists were interested in buying it, and there's, there's...
Those aren't valid anymore.
I mean, there's, I know, I mean, it's, it's all scum cabbage, you know, it's all, it's all, it's all wet, and, and I, I'm, I'm just bringing out that the appraiser thought that that was, you know, that would significantly affect the valuation to the point where it would affect our...
He's not supposed to do that, he's not, he's not supposed to do that unless, unless he has distinct evidence or...
The state, the state hired him, I didn't...
He did have distinct evidence, this is...
No, unless, unless there's, you know, but that's conjecture, though.
No, it, it really wasn't, because it's clear, I mean, there's a stream, it's not, it's not a questionable wetland or G maybe.
Ms. Gagnon is a biologist, she can identify every plant in the woodlot.
But they, they also, they go by soils now.
That goes, that goes back to Larry's point, though, is you, you create the lot with the 50-foot on the, the side that's on the, for lack of a better word, public way and the easement on the side that's in question, so that, we're not talking about passing and repass.
Well, that's why we're giving up both sides of our property for the same price, for one thing, you know.
Yeah, but Mitch makes the point that, I mean, there's no way of preventing public, someone can walk down with a gun and go hunting, you know.
That, that, they could walk, drive with guns and they can, and the, the state could pave a road there if they wanted, the state could do anything.
Well, they're not coming, they're not, that's not going to happen.
Well, I'm just saying, they own it, they own it.
All right, well, you've got some things, so, you want, I can, I can take a vote, you know, to deny, or you can just, uh, say, okay, withdraw it temporarily till next meeting.
Well, we, until May 30th.
We have enough time.
We have enough time, what?
Our deadline is May 30th, right?
It's actually June 4th.
Oh, okay.
I, I just stamped it in.
Oh, we have enough time anyway, so we don't have to go down, okay, so...
So, do you want to take a motion to send it?
We're not recreating the wheel, we have enough time, within the 21-day period, okay?
Because we'll meet in 14 days.
Yeah, we're going to meet in 14 days at 7:30 and put them on the agenda for 7:30. All right. There's no, I mean, that gives time for the members and Steve, you know, especially Steve can collaborate with whoever, Chris, and get up to speed, you know, you're going to, you potentially could use every vote, and we have a full complement now, not four members, five.
You're, you're all welcome to come out any time and I'll show you around.
Well, you were proactive, I already went out.
I just happened to be out there, yeah, so, uh...
And I'll, I'll go out myself.
Yeah, and, and do, do look at the south side, you know, and, and see if you...
That's what I want to look at, yeah.
Not to mention the circumstances.
And feel free, you have, you have, Ms. Gagnon, you have Katrina's email and all that?
Correct.
And also from Merri, and if there's anything, so...
And town council, so, Pickett and Miaris, is that right?
No.
Pardon?
Your town council is Pickett and Miaris, or?
No, Brackett.
Brackett.
Oh, right.
Brackett Lucas.
Judy, oh, yeah, is it Brackett?
She used to be Pickett and Mieres.
Right, it's Brackett Lucas, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you know, you, so you know Judy. Okay. I think we.
Did you want to give these to us?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
We'll digest and we're getting input from as many, from billions, but we're still, you know, we got in for the town administrator waiting a bit. So.
If you do find anything extra in the next week or two, forward along so I can get it to her.
Thanks, thanks, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, new business?
Sorry, we have that, that additional Anna, or do you want to leave that till then?
Leave it till then, but you don't have to do it. I want to get, Sandy's been waiting.
Okay.
It's switch bay glass and modification, we have to look at, Ms. Charlie, who's, Sandy, you doing it yourself or is Charlie?
Charlie's here.
Look. I don't have my glasses on, okay.
I can speak to it.
All right, Charlie, just give your presentation, I won't read the thing. You can do it, you know it. This is. This is E in the packet.
And I've got additional.
All right, all the members familiar with the land that we're talking about?
Yes.
You stay. This is, it's switch bay glasses, it's like, it's a business park there and industrial park. Right. A letter from Charlie, is Charlie, give a quick summary, why, what? Without, before you get into the, just what you're trying to ask for tonight?
Yeah, we're asking for a minor modification is a switch bay glass site or the Riley Business Park as the case may be.
For the reasons of?
Minor modification for the reasons of.
But then there'd be no fee and also you wouldn't have to reapply and have a public.
Correct.
Okay, just so.
Oh, thanks. Okay, appreciate it.
Because we have some new members.
That's fine. There is a long history to this site, I think it dates back to the original, it's switch bay glass, I think goes back to ninety-seven.
Yes.
And, and then since that time, we've been, we've got a number of special permits on this site to build various buildings, there's a total of seven buildings approved on the property. Most of which have been built, but this is what's considered, this is in the back section of the site. This is building two and building three. Sandy was fortunate enough to be able to gain ownership of the abutting property, which is in this location. So with that, there used to be, there used to be a home at this location. And now that he has that property, we still have to go through a Form A process whereby we'll, we'll combine these. It's actually two lots that Sandy hung side by side.
Charlie, where's Route One, just so you can.
Route One is down here. So this is all the way on the.
The back.
Back, very back.
The Trudells, is that their house?
That was where the Trudells is going. Trudells was here, Sandy's bought the Trudell property and that, that.
Really?
That mine is gone.
Home style, right?
We demolished it last year.
Wasn't a bad house. It was a nice spot, right?
The fireman had a real good time with it for a couple of months.
So the, the intention is, the intention is Sandy currently uses this building as a really manufacturing for putting together window frames, if I'm saying that right. And the intention is, is that, the intention is, is that he just, he wants to streamline, streamline the operations inside that building, it's almost like a, like an assembly line. And he's not really planning on hiring any additional employees, but the idea is that, that the streamline, the employees that work in there now can extend that streamline through this building. So that's, it's an additional, I think it's twenty-one thousand square feet. The second building.
How big is it? The, the, the original one looks like.
Uh, it looks about the same.
Like twenty-five or almost the same.
Yeah, it's probably like twenty-five.
Just about the same size.
Yeah, just about the same size. This building was sixty thousand square foot building, mostly warehouse, there is some office down front. What Sandy wants to do on this one is extend the warehouse to the back of the site. It's about eleven thousand square feet for the purpose of creating additional lease space unless you have some other designs on that.
Yeah, yeah, is that, so the one on the left is used by you, the other one's leased out?
Yes. As warehouse space.
And they're, and they're on separate lots right now, we subdivided those two lots way back when. The intention is, is that we'll file a Form A to go, to actually take the Trudell lot and combine, actually probably create three lots from the Trudell, Trudell lot, we'll create a lot down in front, which we may be able to do something with residents down the front, but the back portion, we would combine one portion with this lot and one portion with that lot, so that the two, the two commercial lots would go all the way to the back.
So really what we're doing is we're asking for a modification so we can now build these buildings back to zoning line.
Correct.
Which we had held them back from in the original design.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was the original condition when you first did the industrial permit.
But now where we own the residential land on the other side of the zoning line, we can, we can flip those buffers over into the, into the residential land.
But you're not intending to use, how many acres did you purchase?
Twenty. We're only gonna use a couple, two or three.
Are you going to build another building?
Not back there because there's nothing back there that we can build on. We can only go back as far as that, Chong will the zoning line?
The zoning line is actually the old property line, which is here.
That's what I thought, right.
So.
But just creates the buffer.
Yes.
Right. We are proposing to take these rooftops and put it into a new infiltration system, which is right at this location.
Now, I mean, that's, that's an issue that was brought up, I mean, it's kind of unprecedented, right?
No, it's not, it's totally precedent.
It's totally precedent.
It's exactly what Schilling, they did, Schilling.
Oh, they did that at Schilling?
Absolutely.
The detention bases.
What are we talking about, putting a detention base?
Putting the, putting the detention base in, in the residential zone, yeah.
They put in the residential outline, it doesn't matter. You own it, so.
So that, no, that's, that would be a new detention facility.
Yes.
Did you have to go and, you have any comment there?
On the whole thing or just on that? Well, I think the issue is whether we have to hold a public hearing on this. Isn't that, isn't that what we're talking about?
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
We've been to the CONSCOM.
Yeah.
They're waiting for Larry's, basically waiting for Larry's approval of the, the drainage calculations. So CONSCOM is basically okay pending his approval with the position of the.
Then why do you want, so you're giving the presentation, you really didn't even want to vote tonight, do you want it to we? Whether it's major or minor, does Larry want, does he need to go out, do you need to?
You know, I, I, I think they're asking you to decide tonight whether it's major or minor.
Why?
And, and the way.
Keeps the process.
The way I see it is, is that, I, I don't, I think you can approve it as a minor modification, you did so with the nine thousand square foot addition to building one, Charlie, it's in the bottom left-hand corner.
I remember that one, yeah.
Nine thousand square feet?
Nine thousand square feet and that was done in oh nine, I think. Your, your basic special permit site plan was in oh seven, which was built off of a nineteen ninety-nine approval. So there's been, there's been two full site plan special permits, I do believe, and one minor modification to the latter one.
That's correct.
And I think you could do that here. My only concern is with the Abutter Graham, that's the house that's shown to the, to the, up above. And whether or not the lots that are owned by Sandy off of Weathersfield Street might be under purchase and sale or have been sold to anyone. Other than that, I don't see that this would affect anyone.
We still, I still own the three lots, there's no purchase and sales yet. And we have a letter from, from Dan Graham citing his approval.
But Dan's, of course, Dan was coming.
He was coming tonight, but his wife is not well at all.
Being a direct abutter proposed building additions to four twenty and four twenty-eight, Newbury, for Turnpike, Switch Bay Glass Company, Inc. I wanted to voice my support for the project further drawn submitted by Meridian Associates dated April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Signed, Daniel Graham, three forty-four Weathersfield Street, Riley Mills, and witnessed.
I, I don't think thirty-three thousand square feet is a minor modification, that's my opinion. Nine thousand, I think nine thousand was a stretch, thirty-three, I'm not, you know, I don't think it's a minor modification.
It's worth noting, there's, there's about a hundred and forty thousand square feet of floor space approved on the site now, so this is, it's not as if we're tripling that. This is a, it's about, I think it works out to be, I don't know the exact percentage, but I think it's about fifteen, fifteen or twenty percent.
Yeah, that's how you have to look at it.
Well, we're not looking. I don't think that's all you have to look at.
No, I think in terms of the entire.
I don't think, well, not necessarily, I mean, what, what rule or principle are you deciding?
No, I'm just saying, but what is, what is the intent of holding a hearing when the, when the buffer's, what's the hearing for?
Well.
And Larry's saying.
To, to give people in town or abutters a chance to comment.
Yes, we did.
To give other boards, commissions a chance to comment.
Well, the, the only other commission that is really relevant is the, is the CONSCOM.
Board of Selectment is relevant.
What would the, the approval process be with the Board of Selectment?
The Board of Selectment could comment on projects if they feel it's appropriate.
I haven't in the past.
I have a problem with this, what do, what does minor mean?
It's undefined.
Okay, so.
No, that's why we have.
I agree with you, Cliff, that thirty thousand square feet doesn't sound minor.
It's not my definition of minor, but.
But what is, I mean, what, we're, we're not changing the criteria of either of the, the prior special permits. We're just enlarging the footprints of two buildings in the back of our lot that no one's ever gonna see.
But it affects traffic.
What does it affect?
Traffic, parking?
We're, we're, as stated, we're, we're expanding a warehouse use, right?
Which can change.
Where has, where the tenant there has, right now sixty-five thousand square foot building, there's, I think, five people in it. The other building, we are, I occupy, my company occupies.
Yeah.
And we use, what we, what we want to do is set up a production line for a specific product. So when we run that product, we shift existing employees to that production line and run it for a week, a two, or a month.
But parking is based on square footage of building and other criteria too.
But there's a special permit on this site, special permit inside plan review on the site. And we can't change the use on site without coming back for, so if we wanted to change this into an office building, which goes directly to, which goes directly to the parking and traffic, if we wanted to use it for a much, highly intensive use, we'd have to return to this board for modifications.
We have an abundance of parking. Well, I, there's never been, there's never been a complaint about us parking out of Route One.
No, that doesn't, that's not insane, it just goes by the rules of the law. And I hear, you know, towns oftentimes, you know, have parking criteria that creates overparking, you know, and so there's, they're looking at that, I mean, that's true. And you have too much impervious area and depending on the use, you don't use the park. Particularly warehouse, you might have, need twenty spots and you use three, you know. And you can, and, and, you know, you can look at it as shared parking because the buildings are close to each other.
Under the two special permits, we have parking for everything that is built.
And the uses that are therein.
Yes. And we also have, under the second special permit, we have potential expansion areas for parking already designated.
I remember that.
Out in, in front of building six, which is basically out towards Route One.
But that's what the, what I'm talking about, whether or not this board will have had that discussion about shared parking with different, with segregated lots, you know.
Well, this, no, this, this is, this isn't.
For your business, that's true.
Right, this isn't segregated lots, this was just, when we, we did the second site plan review, right? When, when I bought the additional thirty odd acres, that is the northern part of the, of the site. And we permitted those three buildings. We obviously designed the parking for those three buildings. And we also designated expansion parking in a grassy area that's up towards the Route One.
Yeah. If it became necessary.
If it became necessary. So the, the potential is already there, it's already been allocated and we've already kept buildings off of it.
So you're engaging, Larry is, you're, you're reviewing the drainage counts for the detention base?
Well, more than that, my job would be the same whether it's a major or minor modification, I'm gonna review the whole application.
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean.
And stormwater.
And stormwater, but I'm gonna review the whole application.
I just want him to review it and then I'll just vote, you know, eight o'clock next meeting, that's.
The fee though, too.
Well, he's, there's money in that, you already have still money in the account.
No, the, the application fee, he was asking to waive it if it was a minor modification and if, if it isn't, and it's a special permit site plan, that's twelve hundred dollars.
We don't need to vote on it tonight, is what I'm saying to the board. If Larry has some, you know, if Larry assumes some more deliberation, I mean, it's more.
I'm gonna do a lot more, I haven't done any yet, other than familiarize myself with the. Well, I agree, we don't need to vote on it tonight, but.
Well, we've got your, we've got your opinion.
I don't know if I'm gonna change my opinion just because I have a report from Larry.
No, I don't, not necessarily that's the case, and that's why we have, that's why we, we're talking about it. I mean, I, you, and the other board members can think about it and, 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 you know, look over the application. I haven't necessarily made a, I mean, I'm leaning towards that it's a minor modification because they're simply adding to, the, the buildings have an existing use. And it kind of changes my mind the fact that you have more than adequate buffer and, you know, between the residents and this commercially use. Much more, for example, than in Tumulus.
We only have that one abutter, he's the only guy that's out back.
And I appreciate having that submission.
I, I just have a problem with the definition of minor.
Well, it's, that's.
I have a, it's not the parking or anything, it's not, it's not the company or anything, it's just, I'm looking at it and it, one building is almost doubled. It, just the lot on the map.
See, I go more by use and not the sound.
Because I'm new here, I haven't, wasn't around this two thousand seven special permit hearing, one understanding though is that the two thousand seven special permit allowed for this building, you just didn't use it at that time, is that right?
Well, no, the, the point, the point here is that when we, we asked for the permits in two thousand seven, the property line was right here, the zoning line, the zoning line and the property line were the same.
So you need that buffer, and you got it.
And there was a house here, right? So we were required to hold the buildings back thirty feet from this zoning line. We held it back twice that, right?
Well, for good reason.
Mm-hmm.
But you could have built a larger building just the same pursuant to that permit, so, and for that reason, I'm thinking it's, it's minor.
No, no, that's not true.
Oh, it's not true, okay, then, then.
Well, yes, it is true to a certain extent, because they were approved to build building four of twenty thousand square feet, which they haven't built.
Hasn't even built.
And you can show her that, yeah, right?
Yeah, there's another building that was approved right here.
Right there.
That hasn't been built.
Right.
Right, so in a way, this building isn't getting any bigger at all, bigger than the approved, the approved footprint.
But you're still approved for the other one, so you could build that.
Yes, I could. Then I'm gonna get into a parking problem. But now that I own this piece back here, the thirty foot required buffer between the two zoning, I can flip over the other way.
Right.
And that's what I'm proposing. So now I can build right to the zoning line. And what we, this, this line is really just an imaginary line.
Well, it's existing lot line, right?
Yeah, well, we, we had, we added this and it's, it's strictly a tax, it's an accounting thing.
Yeah, right.
Between this piece of land and that piece of land, okay? And our plan is, because the zoning also says that this pond has to be on the lot where it's, where the water is coming from, that's why we're gonna divide this, this long, narrow residential lot, we're gonna break it up into three sections. Put one piece with four twenty realty and half of the detention pond. There'll be another piece here that goes to four twenty, four twenty-eight for this building. And then there'll, there'll still be some residential land with frontage that goes down to Weathersfield, which abuts the residential land we own down there. And my guess at this point is that that residential land will get folded into that, one of those three lots down there. Because I don't think that this is gonna prove to be built.
Well, I just want to make one other point that, that if we do decide that a public hearing, I don't think that public hearing is gonna take very long, especially since Larry's already working on the, the project, so.
And the one abutters signed off.
And the one abutters signed off, and so probably no one will show up at the, the public hearing.
So what do we, what, what are we gonna accomplish by?
But you don't know until you actually hold it, you know? And that's why we have public hearings, to give people the right to come in if they want to and, and, you know, ask questions or, or raise objections.
Would you?
What kind of objection could be put forward that would be relevant to this? That someone doesn't want to see me add to a building and he lives a half a mile down the street? Is that, is that gonna be something that the board is really gonna seriously consider?
I have a problem that somebody's gonna say this is not a minor.
Yeah.
Right, and that we should have.
People can say anything, but how would they back, the point is.
I don't think it is minor.
I don't, that's, that's why I don't think it's minor.
Would you vote, are you asking for them to pay a thousand dollars for an application fee?
I'm not, I don't know what the appropriate fee is.
Well, that's what it says.
Well, that, that's not relevant to determining whether it's minor.
No, but I'm just saying, well.
You know, how much fee are they gonna pay?
The motivation isn't, here isn't to duck a thousand dollar application.
Well, I know that, but I'm just bringing, in the past, we've, you know.
I just don't want to get caught at some point, somebody saying that that wasn't a minor.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
An advantage to deciding on it tonight is that it can be published, the ad, and we can get going and set the public hearing. Can't have it the twenty-ninth, but the week after, or two weeks after, so.
I think it's all gonna, Sandy's point, it's all gonna end up in the same place, but I.
It's just, it's just time.
I know.
It's time, time is money.
I think it's the right way to do it.
I do too. I do, too.
So that'd be June 12th, possibly.
Uh, being new, I'd, uh, you can defer.
No, no, you're in, I want to defer.
Well, I'm. I, I don't see anything wrong with what he wants to do at all.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know all the rules on minor or major, but, but, I mean, he's all by himself out there, and there's nobody around him.
Right. And just to clarify, I don't see anything wrong with what he was proposing to do either, but there's a process that we have to follow.
Right. Which, and I'm a little green on where it's my first day here, you know, but I'm all, you know.
Except, except for just proposing minor modifications to an already approved plan, and I just have a hard time saying that the 32,000 square feet is minor.
Well, I realize that once things happen, you know, people combine the woodwork.
Right, that's the problem.
But, uh, you know, I don't see anything wrong.
I mean, there's, I mean, what sort of, what sort of.
I could agree with you more.
Change is there going to be in the, the body of, of the existing special permits? There isn't going to be any. I mean, basically, what I'm doing is.
I look at it in the context of the permit and the use, I don't see.
Is permitted in the zoning bylaw, right? Everything that we're doing is either clearly defined, allowed under the bylaw, or there is very, very strong precedent.
And I go more in defiance of the conditions versus the fact you're adding, you know, another structure where there's room to put the structure that, in comparison to the entire commercial area that's been developed, is minor.
I think it's a process.
No, I think.
It's a process. And potentially we're creating a precedent that by calling this minor, well, then the next guy that comes along wants to double his footprint, you're getting all these sorts of arguments like that.
Hi, I'm Lisa Nestram, I'm here for another reason, I live in Raleigh. I'm a little frustrated listening to this argument, because ultimately, who decides what's minor and what's major?
Well, see, that's the problem.
And see, so you're going around in circles. Unless you get someone to define that, you can't give this man an answer.
Well, you have.
And there's no one ultimately that can define that.
Well, it's a, it's, it really, because it is undefined by our bylaw, it's really a judgment call and, for us, to make, and I think each one of us has to make the judgment, whether it is minor or not.
With professional consultation and a presentation and a, and the plan.
Yeah, so do a majority, I mean, it seems like we're going around in circles.
Well, I'm gonna read, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll have to take, uh, I'll entertain a motion, um, one way or the other, so that we can do it tonight, if it has to go to a hearing, so we get any public input on this, then, so be it. We need, um, from, uh, modification, what do we need? Three votes?
Well, I think you'd want someone to, to vote to approve this as a minor modification.
That's what I'm saying, that's the first one. And I get a motion to, to approve it as a minor modification based on the presentation by Murney and Associates and the owner, Mr. Patrickman. I don't even see a motion. A motion to, uh, hold a public hearing, in other words, that it's a major modification of the existing plan?
Well, they have to file an application.
Application first of all.
They did.
First, a mo, minor modification, yeah.
You submitted the full application, though.
Yeah. As I do is take the word minor.
Right. What's on the table now is their request that we approve a minor modification, and no one wants to make, make the motion to approve that.
Even though the application doesn't exist.
Would it, would it help if they, I made the motion to approve it and we denied it?
Sure.
I'll, I'll move that we approve it as a minor modification.
He can do it right after you make it, yeah.
I'll second it.
Also favor? Any abstentions? I'm going to abstain because, uh, so it's four against and one abstention.
You didn't vote yet? Did you vote?
Well, we moved, we asked for, all those in favor, no one, no one voted in favor, so I guess that's a denial. Well, we did.
I'm sorry, that was the major modification?
Do you want to ask for all those opposed?
Oh, sorry. All those opposed?
Tonight?
Since I got, no, I used, I used.
I was just waiting for that.
No, I used the converse.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, so, I appreciate that, but you're right, it's a, it's a tough call, I mean, it's more of a precedent, um, in a public hearing is a, is a cleaner way that doesn't set precedent, so. And also the fact that, um, Mr. Graham is working on some of the issues associated with the project, and he's the planning board consultant, so.
So, Linda, we have a public hearing?
The free, the free file is right away, the public.
It's going to be tomorrow, I mean, you already have it filed, you just got to change it.
The fee, the fee and the.
In the public, in the abutment list, and then the fee.
Did you want to set a public hearing date before I, that we receive the full application? Just so I could get it back or just?
Well, you can set it on the 29th, can't you?
No, it's too late.
Oh, okay.
I will set it, so that means I'd like to meet, uh, you know, we have to meet June 12th.
We're gonna see if I can be here and.
Does anybody have any problem with June 12th?
I'm out of time on June 12th.
You're out of time, June 12th?
Yeah. But I can, we're gonna have somebody here, so you know.
I'll, I'll do it.
I'll be in number one.
Sandy, at that point, you could probably do it.
I'll, I'll be here. Hopefully, it sucks at that point, I don't know, in fact, hey. I won't be here on the 12th. 19th is great.
I'm here on the 12th.
Um, is the 5th too soon? 15th, 5th too soon?
5th is good, the 19th is good.
Takes, has to be two consecutive weeks.
Yeah, we could do, we could do June 5th, but that's a meeting two weeks in a row, because you've already set a meeting May 29th, so.
It's up to the board, I mean, then after that, we don't have to meet.
Was there anything on the 12th?
I want you to June into July.
Well, if they can't make it, Charlie can.
I'm gonna let you meet at the 5th.
The week after the 12th.
19th is good.
I'd rather, I'd rather leave the rest of June open. Want to meet two weeks? I don't, I don't have a problem with.
Can this be a special permit?
Boy. I'll do that. All right, because everybody can be there, the 5th.
5th is good.
Charlie, because the, the 5th is better for you?
Yeah.
That means you got to move.
Katrina, do you need all this stuff tomorrow?
Um, I'm gonna start right now.
It has to be every time.
So it could be Monday.
Well, you gotta get it in, don't you want to get it in by Friday?
What can we do for my job?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm only gonna be here for.
I mean, all you have to do is take, take.
I'm not ready to be here.
Make it to the new hearing today on this.
Yeah, I just said Monday, because I can, tomorrow.
But maybe June 5th.
The legal ad has to go into paper next Wednesday.
Okay, that's fine.
The only thing that will be on the 5th will be this, at this point, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please move it up, all right?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Good night.
Good night.
That's why, that's why we moved this.
Did you want to say Friday and I want to say?
I think he's got, he's got opportunities now to do some things. I think once he builds a retention bond, it's a commercial one, but the third lot that he's going to subdivide out, he can incorporate that into the residential lots that he apparently owns on Weathersfield.
He did it where he wanted to.
It was a sale a long time, right?
Oh, those, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one.
He sounds like he says, this is it.
All right. Go on. Good evening, um, my name's Matt Cynell, I'm from Millennium Engineering.
Okay, just please state your name again for Katrina. Oh, you already have it anyways.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm from Millennium Engineering, um, we're here representing the Todd family. You may recognize this one that was before you, just a little over a year ago.
I know, yes.
Uh, it's on the corner of Main Street and Church. You'll see there's a faded dashed line here where the original approved line was. The, the Todd family has had the lot in the back here on the market for the last eight to.
You won't find it.
Eight months or so, that on the market, they have a, a potential buyer in mind, and the, the proposed use of the land requires that they increase the area of the lot. So what they propose to do at this point is to take another portion of what was Lot One, away from Lot One and add it to Lot Two. The original lot was 1.29 acres, uh, we're taking .71 acres from Lot One and combining it with Two to make Lot 2A. We have the frontage untouched, um, the frontage on the remaining piece remains untouched, and the area for both lots is greater than what's required for the zoning.
I have a motion.
I'll move to approve the 4A.
I'll second.
Second by Gene. All of them favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is this supposed to be two acres?
It's larger than what's required.
Okay.
Right.
But it says, says plus or minus.
30 in the central.
Oh, right, because it's square footage, if we actually calculate other square footage, it's very close to two acres, so it could be.
Right, it's also in the central district, so it's more than.
Right, right. So the minimum requirement.
I'm just saying, if you need two acres, figure out how to make it two acres, then.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you want to sign it?
Yeah, let's sign it, please.
No, I think this was it.
And you're welcome for getting it on at the last minute.
This was just a.
Thank you, very much. You went from E to G, so what happened to that?
Yeah, no, I decided not to do it.
Okay. After that.
Well, to the other people, I just. No, this had already been in front of us.
No, Katrina was great, she, she asked for a little bit of advance.
We're very, I mean, we're just like, all right.
This is my mother, I'm Barry Todd, this is my mother's, my dad's property, so. My dad's a seaman, my mom.
No, but, great brothers.
You know.
Frank.
David, have you signed it?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for this.
Yeah, the associate member. 23. 64.
Thank you, just for the record, I guess, in the future, we do want to get them just a couple days.
No, that was the intention, again, it was, um, a question of what the potential buyer could do with the land, and we wanted to make sure that that was comfortable, and then at the last minute, we decided regardless of that, we want to move forward anyway, so.
Just, what's the, what's he just putting there?
I believe he's looking at multifamily.
Just two families, yeah.
Everybody have a copy of the minutes? You'd like to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Sorry, I didn't roll that up.
These are minutes from April 10th, 2013. Obviously, Steve, you know what.
Does it have a letter on it?
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
J K H I.
Could.
Oh, is there a?
No, is anybody?
No, I can't do a thing.
Next up, okay.
And Gene?
I think you're great.
Since, uh, since you're very good at pointing out titles and all that.
No, I am nothing, I couldn't find it.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't find it? All right, can I have a motion to approve the April 10th minutes? David?
Yeah.
I want a motion to approve the April 10th minutes, please.
I will make a motion to approve the April 10th.
Can I have a second? Second by Cliff Pierce. All of us in favor?
All right.
Aye, that's unanimous. Are there any comments on?
It's really good.
Katrina, also, um, the selectmen voted, I believe, to make the transfer for, uh, our expenses.
We don't have to do anything on it, I just was letting everyone know.
But then they voted, they voted, which is good, uh, because obviously, Katrina's first year, with some of the things like filing habits and so forth, uh, we went over, but.
Portable heater?
Yeah. Peeling, yeah.
How did we do on zoning, and since I heard what they all got passed?
Yes, they did.
All got passed.
Have any comments on your budget?
Let's do Hawksworth.
All right, okay.
To B.
Sorry, we're gonna go back to, uh, new business. Hawksworth Estates has a, um, request by Jeff and David Clark for extension of a tripartite agreement, uh, for the construction completion date. You, you asked them, what did you ask them for?
Oh, a request for extension, I mean, I'm sorry, you, you didn't get it, because I got it after.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I sent this out, so I have it here.
Yeah. As I read your, your email.
I probably printed it out somewhere for the numbers, and I don't want to put it to you, it's right there.
So I'm gonna print it for my, kind of, what date?
We're writing today to request an extension to the tripartite occurring in place for Dexter Drive, people know where this is off of what, Central Street? Uh, we're completing the final items required, uh, was it 4 houses?
Yeah.
And we'll be submitting ASBills for the subdivision soon. We hope to be ready to request that the road be accepted by the town during the fall town meeting. So this is part of wrapping it up, right? Listen.
Is there still surety on that?
Yes, 20,000.
All right, you have any comments?
No, he called me to ask me, you know, to come out and, and start the final acceptance process. I've seen no street acceptance plan or ASBill plans, I don't think the bounds are in, but they did do basically all the work this past fall. They paved curb, sidewalk.
Okay.
Street trees, garb, all of that.
So there's no.
But they're not asking for a reduction or anything.
No, no, they're just asking.
They're just asking for an extension, so they.
Yeah, because they're not. An extension to the, the date, and.
Is it in the letter?
No.
Usually it's for a year, but they're looking to have it accepted this fall.
Well, why don't we just do it for a year?
A year, right, do the default, right, Cliff?
Well, we might have a fall town meeting.
Maybe it's on May, May 30th, and it should all be.
Okay, we'll write it in May 30th, that's what we're doing. Okay, we'll write it in May thirtieth. That's what we're doing.
So, I move to extend the timeline for a year?
Second. All of them favor?
Aye.
David, Jake with second. Yeah, it's good to see that, and they still have surety and everything's there, right? It's a nice thing now that our records are a little tighter. And the budget transfer's been done. Once in a while, when Katrina, it is required by the planner to give us a budget update every meeting, so she does take the time to spreadsheet that. At least look at it. And if you have any comments on it, let us know, because it's important that we stay on top of it, so we understand where we're at as the year progresses.
Hopefully, this fall, too, the planning board can propose while those revolving...
That's why I was going to...
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's, say that again, because that's important.
Well, maybe this summer, you can talk about it more, creating a revolving account for all the filing fees. So, the filing fees could go into a planning board account, and then we could pay the legal ads out of that instead of having the applicants pay the legal ad on top of the filing fee, make it part of the filing fee, because a thousand dollars, we should probably explain where that goes and how it's spent. If we could spend it on their expenses, that would probably be a good thing.
Thank you. Yeah, and that maybe there was a separate fee for lighting or something like that. It could all be incorporated if necessary.
Right.
All right, are there any correspondents you want to bring up? Now's your chance, and then...
Not unless any, anyone saw anything interesting that they wanted to bring up. We do have the ZBA asks for comments. It's kind of, it's an after-the-fact deal, so I don't know if comments...
All right, comments on that? On one-twelve Newbury Road, across from Mr. Casciotis, a while ago, a large addition was built to a house, a very large addition, was going to be a free car garage with residential space up above it. They're doing an appraisal, and they're kind of looking at where that, they, they haven't, they didn't really build, they didn't build the garage. They built it all so it's residential, I mean, so it's living space, okay? Mr. Ward, Billy Inspector Ward was there in the beginning, then he left for two years, and the next Billy Inspector kind of took over the case. So, it kind of got dropped the ball, whether it was classified as an in-law apartment, two families, that they're going in front of the ZBA for a variance because of the undersized, is that right?
Because it's too big for the, to be an accessory in-law apartment, and their lot is too small to be a two-family conversion. So, they can either get a special permit from the ZBA to do the two-family conversion on a smaller lot than is allowed, or they can get a special permit to do the accessory in-law with a variance, and they're opting to go that route.
Because a variance is permanent.
No, they just thought it would, it would be better for their appraised value, I think. But did you want to explain to the, what conflict of interest, and I don't know if you were going to discuss it or talk about it more, but...
Yeah, Mr. Casciotis, yeah. Steve, yeah, as an abutter, if we were going to, as an abutter, interests of the conflict of interest.
Do you know, you know all about that.
And, yeah, you will have to...
You would just have to say if you're, if you live nearby, and if you feel like you can make a decision.
Unvaried.
Right.
But you have to bring it up.
Well, if you're a abutter, I think you just got to recuse yourself.
Yeah, as an abutter, and you know that, you already said that, so... But, and also, they have to take this, you got to go online and also show evidence to the clerk. You can talk to them.
Yeah, I, we...
The ethics, and there's ethics. They give you kind of cases, and you have to make decisions on them. It's very useful, actually.
Hard to fail.
Okay, so do that. And also, I just wanted to give a plug. Katrina is working to get publicity for, to expand and to improve, and get help for, to lay out and connect bike paths and...
Oh, yeah, bicycle and pedestrian trails. And we're trying to get an article in the paper, trying to get people to come in and volunteer and be part of a group that, you know, goes after grants, grant funds, and tries to connect both sides of Raleigh, and in addition, we want to connect to other communities, because there's a lot of state funds right now building a border to Boston rail trail, a mix of rail trail and roads. And, you know, Salisbury, Newbury Court have a big part of it, but now it's connecting to Newbury, and they're in the planning stages, Georgetown, and we're pretty close to Georgetown.